I call the meeting to order, please. Can everybody please take their seats? All right, before the prayer, do we have any special intentions this evening? Any special intentions? Counsel? Yes, Councilman Brannigan?
I just want everybody to pray for the Alabama fans. I think a lot of them will be jumping off the bridge pretty soon. And so if you know any, just call and make sure they don't go jump off the bridge.
Go Tigers. Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Dee Dunn to plead, please lead us in the prayer.
You're the prayer, and then Brian's the pledge.
Your master, as you come together once again in summer, we just want to tell you that because 2023 is born, and we are embarking on a new year of 2023. God, I pray tonight that you would bring the city into unity. I pray for the mayor, new chief, and I pray for the council and the administration, that we will all come together to make the city of Kenner a better city in the year of 2024. We have a lot of those in common, and it took us years. We can't pay you, but we can show you on tape and play you, sir. God, I'm asking for forgiveness from you now, but is the number to understand that no matter what you do, we do it for the betterment of the citizens of the city of Kenner. In Jesus' name.
Councilman Brian Brannigan, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we begin, I just want to say it's an honor. I'm currently the president of the council, and Councilman Tom Wilmot is the vice president. It's an honor to lead a public body like this. I had no idea five years ago I'd be an elected official, much less the president of an elected council. So honored to be here, happy to work for the public and to my district and representative. I look forward to the great working relationship I've had with the administration, mayor's office, all of our departments, and of course, everybody in the council and their assistance. So, Madam Clerk, you ready to begin?
Yes, sir. We have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Michael Blazer.
Thank you. And you're honored to be the council president. You're really going to be honored next council meeting when I'll be out of town and you'll be acting mayor. So you can sit here and don't have to vote. Everybody can yell at you, so you're on the fast track.
Well, I guess in the Driftwood Parade, I'll run on the mayor's float then and not mine.
Yes. Things come into the float, not out. All right. Congratulations. The City of Kenner's tradition celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. will be held this coming Monday, January 15th. The celebration will be hosted by District One Councilwoman Dee Dunn. It begins at 11:00 a.m. at the Providence Baptist Church located at 11509 Jefferson Highway and ends at the A.P. Clay Center, 200 Decatur, where a program honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King will follow. In case it's going to be cold and sleety and rainy, she's not looking, because she said it's going to be perfect weather. The program will end at the Pilgrim Baptist Church right across the street here. We hope to see you there, and I'm sure you have a lot to say about it later in this meeting. I'm also happy to announce, beginning tomorrow, Friday, January 12th, Kenner Recreation is going to start offering free pickleball courts at the Galatas Gym from 4:30 to 8:30 p.m. It's free. There will be pickleball equipment for those that want to play to use. The gym rules and pickleball etiquette will be posted at the gym. So this is the first come, first served, first time doing it. I don't know exactly what pickleball etiquette is, but it'll be posted on the gym walls. And I'd also like to thank Recreation Director Charles Elaine and Assistant Director Terrence Jones for organizing Kenner Rec Basketball Kickoff for Tulane's men and women's basketball coaches and players. Both teams' coaches and players came to Musburger Lino Gym Tuesday to welcome the kids registered for our, in our recreation program. I'm happy to say we have over 200 kids registered in our current basketball season. They had fun getting pictures, autographs, and George Brannigan even yelled "Go Tigers" at a Tulane event. So you gotta love him. And finally, tonight, Agenda 15F. We're asking to approve a cooperative endeavor agreement for our summer camp at Musburger Lino. On the next meeting, there will be a different one at Galatas for a first reading, so didn't have enough time to get that one on this meeting. Just wanted everyone to know that there'll be two summer camps on the north side, and for the first time, I believe Charles said, in over eight years, Kenner Recreation will be offering a summer camp for kids at Buddy Lawson Gym. So we should have information on that shortly on the city's website. And with that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I had a wardrobe malfunction after lunch today. That's why I'm not wearing a tie.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Do we have any resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor this evening?
Don't believe we do.
Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, approval of minutes to regular council meeting of December 22nd, 2023. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting alcoholic beverage permit to friends of Rivertown on February 25th, 2024, in the Rivertown parking lot at 400 Williams Boulevard, being property owned by the City of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 2B is a resolution granting alcoholic beverage permit to friends of Rivertown on February 10th, 2024, at Kenner City Park, 3800 Loyola Drive, being property owned by the City of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 2C is a resolution granting alcoholic beverage permit to friends of Rivertown on February 12th, 2024, in the Rivertown parking lot at 400 Williams Boulevard, being property owned by the City of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2373-23, Rotary Club of Kenner to hold a public gathering on January 27th, 2024, from 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for the purpose of an annual Lake Town Run/Walk fundraiser in Lake Town, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 2376-23, the City of Kenner to hold a public gathering on February 12th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Lundie Graff Festival 2024, in the Rivertown parking lot at 400 block up Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3C is application number 2377-23, Kenner Crew of ISIS to hold a public gathering on February 10th, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of a parade throughout the streets of Kenner and Kenner, Louisiana. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinnney. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 8, public hearings and final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,433, and ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending section 16.01 fee schedule to add a board of zoning adjustments after the fact variance fee of $600.
Let's open the public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilmember McKinnney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Council President. So essentially, what we're doing with this is when the planning department became the custodian of the BZA last October, as we moved forward with these cases, we noticed a substantial number of cases that were for variances that were post-work, called after the fact. Our statistics show approximately 45% through to date, and a lot of those are from developments where the plans have been approved by the code enforcement department but were not built according to those plans. And so then they come back and say, "Well, you didn't build your plans, you can't get an occupancy permit, but you have to get a variance." And they come to us. And, you know, it's not just the planning department, the board of zoning adjustment, and I'd like to say that we have three members of the board here to support this as well tonight. We determined that there needed to be some mechanism to, some punitive mechanism to punish those who willfully changed their plans without going back to the code enforcement department and getting those new plans approved. So we, my assistant director, Chris Stilinski, did extensive research, and I believe y'all have copies of the report, looked at a bunch of different jurisdictions and how they handled after the fact, and we found a lot of jurisdictions that increased the fees for variances that were considered after the fact, which means it was built and it violated some code that we have related to the setbacks, building height, parking, whatever the particular issue is. And so we came up with the idea of putting an after-the-fact fee of $600. So we changed our forms, and now they have to certify that whether this is an after-the-fact variance or not, and we're asking them some additional questions. I'm not going to go into it, but it's designed to elicit information that the board can then use to render a better decision on some of these. So $600, I believe the existing variance fee is 300, 150. So it's a significant increase, fourfold from the basic variance fee, and we think that's, actually, I personally think it should be a little higher, but we're comfortable with the 600. It's punitive in the sense that it might get some people's attention, and they'll think twice again before, on another project, they build not according to the plans that were approved.
So it's a procedural loophole that you're fixing to avoid?
Well, procedural, so the variance procedure is that when someone goes in with a building, set of building plans, commercial, industrial, whatever, anything that's not a shed basically requires a building permit in the city of Kenner, and some sheds require building permits, fences, et cetera, all require building permits. So they have to go through the code enforcement department. There's plan review. They review those plans. They make a note to the applicant of any deviations from the codes that they need to address, and they cannot get a building permit until they either get a variance prior to their permitting or fix the issues at permitting and now have a set of plans that are compliant with the codes of the city of Kenner.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. So Mr. Dufour, when you say that percentage, you said to date, how long has that been that you've seen these changes?
Well, we've been, we've been responsible for the BZA since October of last, of 2021. So how far back did we go in this, Chris? 22.
So...
Just then, just then, this is not going back. This is just since we've been in charge. It's like 45% of these are after-the-fact variances.
I understand. Could you say how many, how many, what number is relative to the percentage approximately?
No, I think, I think Chris might...
Just an approximate. I mean, do you have your report, that it's 40% of 20 cases?
So nine? Now, it's, but there are a couple of cases that have come in that weren't included in the report. That had been after the fact as well.
So again, I mean, it's, 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 I hadn't said it was filling in a loophole of some sort. It's also relevant that I think it's great, I think you worked, you keep it worth.
Thank you.
Councilman Brannigan?
Wendell, I like this idea because I have had several calls on people building in Gabriel and outside of District 4 that had changes. The only thing that would concern me is the fact that we could be given, you know, a situation where we're delaying a person moving forward, and you, we want people moving to the city of Kenner. So I understand that, and I'm for this piece of legislation, but I just would hope that y'all would make sure that, you know, it's done in a timely fashion so that, you know, right out the chute, they're not getting a bad taste in their mouth about living in the city of Kenner.
Now, listen, Councilman, I agree 100% with you, but these, you know, there should be zero after-the-fact variances, actually. That should be the way it works. You know, on new construction, like you should go to the, go to the city, get your permits, and the city, you know, they review it, they tell you, yes, you meet the codes, but you go build it to the drawings that are permitted by the city. We're finding that's not happening all the time, and that's what, one of the issues that this is designed to address. But I agree with you, you know, we're not trying to like make it hard on people, but understand, regardless of whether they, it's after the fact, if they want to build it like that, they would have to come before the permits, the plans are approved, to get a variance anyway, which is going to delay them. So now, they've, they've spent their time building it, now there's a further delay because they've not adhered to their own plans and now come back to the city to ask us to give them a variance for their, their development.
I totally agree with you. I totally understand the thing. The only thing that I'm going to ask the department to do is make sure that if this situation comes up, you move, let's get it done as, you know, as fast as we can.
Absolutely. We like, we, listen.
And I know how you work, so I, I just want to make sure it's out there that we don't want people not being able to move into our house because a variance is dragged on, you know? And if it's their fault, then that's their problem.
When they submit, when they, when the code enforcement department sends them to the planning department, we immediately give them all the information they need, what we need from them to follow the variance, how they're supposed to do it, the cost and everything. And then, well, you know, it's up to them then to return their information to us in a timely manner. But when we get that information, now, I also want to say this, you know, because this involves the zoning code, we have to advertise this just like we would a case to the planning commission. So we have to advertise these cases for three consecutive weeks leading up to the BZA meeting, which means we have to have their application in a month before the meeting. And if they're missing, and if they delay it by a week, it could put them six weeks back. But we try to make them aware of the deadlines. We publish the deadlines for the applications on our website, and we give them the deadlines when we give them the BZA application. These are the deadlines you need to meet. In order to be on the April meeting, we need your information by March of this date.
Okay. Well, as long, yeah, as long as that process is followed, then they can't come back and say that the city is dragging their feet, and that's why I can't get my occupancy permit or whatever. I mean, the goal is to get it done as fast as possible.
That's our goal as well.
And I understand, I understand that you're under time constraints, and I totally agree with this because things change when you're building houses and stuff and buildings. But, you know, it sounds like you have a handle on it, and I, and so I'm supporting this a million percent.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dee Dunn?
Yeah, I just have one question. During the storm, Hurricane Ida, there was, I think there was a waiver of a fence. If you had an existing fence that you had put out?
So I understand your question. Catherine might be able to answer that better because I, we didn't, the BZA process was not in the planning department at that point.
Okay.
And it wasn't under this administration when that happened either.
Okay.
There was not a full waiver of a fence. It was only for repairs of a fence, but not to install a brand-new fence during, after the storm. So if you had a fence that had partial panels that fell down, you needed to replace those two panels, three panels, that was allowed, but to install a new fence, that was never allowed without a permit after the storm.
Well, then that was miscommunication because if you would have come by the city hall, they had signs stating that they were waiving the thing for, you know, you getting an application for a fence.
Yeah, they were waiving permits for repairs to a fence, but not new fences.
It never stated that. I'm just wondering, you know, if that was to come up again because you all keep saying, there were new fences that went up, and you all keep saying, well, you need a permit for a new fence. But I know during that time, there were signs that was put out in front of city hall stating that you did not, you know, it was not required to get a permit. So I'm just asking what happens in a situation like that?
So you're talking about two different issues here.
Okay.
The only, the only way the board of zoning adjustments would get involved in the construction permitting of a fence, if the fence was put up outside of the parameters of the setbacks. So if they built it into the side yard, or they built a fence that fenced in their front yard, which is not permitted, then they would have to come to get a variance. If they built without a permit, that is handled within the code enforcement department, they do not need a variance unless they build the fence illegally to where it's supposed to be.
Okay. Because somebody will question that, and the reason they will question that because it was something that said that you can repair this fence without getting a permit. Many people did. So I'm just, I'm just asking what would happen in that situation, okay?
I would note that even at the time a permit was not needed, they was, the fences, any of them that were installed, would still have been, had needed to be installed meeting the code. So if like somebody placed a fence in their front setback, that would not have been permitted regardless if it needed a permit or not.
Right, I get that, yeah. But you know, we had a couple of calls on that. I think one was in Ronnie's district about a fence that he had to handle, so that's why I'm asking. They called me, and of course, I, you know, I didn't hear...
If they put the fence up legally where it's supposed to go without a permit, that's handled by the code enforcement and mayor's court if it has to go to court.
Okay.
If it's put up in the wrong space, wrong spot, and doesn't meet certain requirements, then they would have to come to the BZA for a variance for their fence. Whether they put it up with a permit or without a permit, they would have to come to the BZA for a variance.
Okay.
Before they could get a final permit, they'd have to get us to say, the BZA to say, "You can put your fence there," and then they take that decision and go to code enforcement to get a permit.
Thanks, Wendell. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience wishing to address the council on 8A? All right, sir, please, pull, one, one second, please. Please state your name and your, I'll see where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Familiar with all that, Mr. Lahat? You got it. Members of the council administration, I'm Wesley Goodman, 3212 Sugar Mill Road and 70065. I'm here as chairman of the Board of Zoning Adjustments. I have with me our members Charles Freel and Eric Rotz. We're here to speak in favor of what's proposed by Mr. Dufour and the administration. As you know, we are tasked with people that are requesting a variance to the Uniform Development Code. Our powers are all outlined in Article 4, and the reasons that people would be entitled to a variance or denied a variance are very clearly outlined on pages 10, 11, and 12 of Article 4. It's hard enough for us, as I'm sure y'all are all familiar with, to make a decision on something that affects people's homes. It's hard enough to do that when they're doing it before the fact, in compliance with the law. It becomes very difficult when they ask for it after the fact, and we have seen an uptick in cases of after the fact, and the one that comes to mind as most glaring was a case on 31st Street where the homeowner not only didn't ask for the variance ahead of time, but their plans were approved by the planning, the plan reviewers, and then they violated them after they violated the plans. So I'm just hoping that this would assist the public in becoming aware that they need to get a variance ahead of time and would really, in a way, make people responsible for what they're doing with this after-the-fact fee. Mr. Freel, Mr. Rotz?
Charlie Freel, I'm at 40 Granada Drive in Kenner.
Okay.
My, I can't add that much to what Mr. Goodman said, although I do feel like financial incentives are the way that people react. This, I think, is a step in the right direction.
I definitely agree. I've seen an uptick in also construction. I get, do, do get complaints from people in my district. I have one right now where someone built these lights on the easement, the servitude. I don't think it's per code, and a lot of neighbors are upset, so I'm dealing with the affected neighbors on that. I had another lady, neighbor built a pool at a permit. That was before we actually got in, but does, I do recognize that, I do agree something needs to be done. So I'm going to be voting for this.
Nothing else from Mr. Rotz. He doesn't want to be a public speaker.
And thanks for y'all's work, and being on this variance board, it's, I know it's volunteer-based, isn't it? Y'all pay, y'all pay the king's ransom, maybe I should do that instead of this.
Not, not a volunteer unless we're asked to volunteer.
Yeah, no, I appreciate y'all doing this, and I know y'all meet time. I came to one of your zoning board things, I think for that pool I mentioned before I got in, but I appreciate y'all's work on everything you do for Kenner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? All right. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinnney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to close a public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0.
On the main issue of 8A, motion by Councilmember McKinnney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to approve. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances on final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structure is located at 3015 Akron Street in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
The motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Ronnie Schwarth. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councilwoman Dee Dunn?
What, you asked me?
You want to speak?
No, I, I mean, this, this has been on, on the list for years. I mean, this, this house has been there, I'm thinking, since the original mother and father passed, so nothing has actually been done to this property. So I'm really happy that it's on, and I think next week they are going to address the council on it. So I'm all for this.
Anybody else? Okay, motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwarth. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution exercising the first one-year renewal of the September 1st, 2022 audit contract with Du Plante, Ratman, Hogan, and Mayor LLP.
And a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember George Brannigan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? In the audience? All right. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to stop you for a second. Pursuant to Rule 43, we had somebody just walk in the council chambers, who just recently elected to our Jefferson Parish District in Kenner. Her name is Rita Bohannon, and she's back there, and I'm stopping everything as I want her to come to the podium and introduce herself and tell us a little bit about herself and what hopefully she's going to do for the city. And Rita, once again, congratulations for your election.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, I know all of you very well. This feels like home, and I'm a, I'm a Kenner girl, so I'm excited about being elected to the Jefferson Parish Council, District 4. I have a wonderful working relationship with the entire council. I'm super proud of that, and of course, the administration. We have a great team, and you have a great support team in Jefferson Parish, so big plans for, for Kenner and as well as the entire district, but since this is the Kenner, Kenner Council, obviously, you know, want to address some, and highlight some things in Kenner. The mayor has been amazing. He's very ambitious, as am I, with what we can do here in Kenner. So hopefully, we'll be announcing things as we go along the next four years, and I just want to thank you for your support. I was, I was endorsed by the entire Kenner City Council, as well as our mayor and our chief. I was endorsed by the entire Kenner City Council, as well as our mayor and our chief. So it was one of the badges of honor that I wore for sure when I ran. So thank you again. I appreciate you, and I look forward to working with everyone.
This is the part where you ask for money of all the districts from Jefferson Parish. So District 3 gets the most, I mean, luck.
I was trying to get out of here before the mayor reminded me that he was gonna be asking me for money, so.
Yes, a lot of people don't understand that we have Jefferson Parish Council and a Kenner Council. Jefferson Parish Council oversees a lot of Kenner, which Rita Bohannon's district does. And we have, of course, the Kenner Council, which manages the affairs and the budget in the city of Kenner. So very important to have a great Jefferson Parish Council to oversee our area and to help us with many different issues on the parish level.
Yeah. Well, you guys can count on me, so you'll always have my ear, for sure.
Oh, we do. Thank you so much, Rita, for coming and introducing yourself to everybody tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, restart, please.
Yes, sir. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,434, and ordinance approved in amendment number two to the agreement with Crowe and Associates Incorporated to provide ditch spraying services on an as-needed basis, increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $50,000 annually for the total not-to-exceed amount of $90,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Got a motion by Councilmember D. Dunn, second by Councilmember Ronnie Schworth. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Councilwoman Wilmot.
Just a question for clarification. We're increasing the 50, and it's a $90,000, so it's over doubling. So I'm just, wanted a clarification.
It's a two-year contract, and the cap for the two years is $40,000 per year. So we are increasing the overall cap by $50,000.
So it's a three, it's already a three?
It's a two-year contract, $40,000. We're looking at an $80,000 contract, okay? And with a cap of $40,000 annually. So we increasing it by $50,000 to accommodate additional spraying, mostly in the South Kenner area.
So we're having more issues that we need more spraying?
Yes, or mostly along South Kenner, Kenner Avenue, Reverend Richard Wilson Drive. We are being more aggressive as far as ditch spraying than in previous years.
And where are we at right now with the contract?
As far, the contract expires in June of 2024, so we'll start rebidding it probably around April of this year, and we have spent thus far $72,542.
So we're at near the?
We're near, that's why we need to increase it to 90.
Thank you. That's all.
Anybody else? Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,435, and ordinance approved in amendment number one to the agreement with Romelli Janitorial Service Incorporated to provide grass cutting of rough-cut areas, ditch slopes, on an as-needed basis, increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $50,000 annually, for a total not-to-exceed amount of $105,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, second by Councilmember D. Dunn. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one? Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,436, and ordinance approved in amendment number four to the engineering agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated, dated March 22, 2019, regarding Loyola Drive and I-10 interchange connection to the new terminal of the New Orleans International Airport, State Project Number H period 011670, Federal Aid Project Number H 011670, City of Kenner Project Number PW-2019-4-AR, to increase the not-to-exceed amount by $20,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $403,000, and to extend the term of the agreement by one year to March 20, 2025, for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Tom Wilmot. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Council first. I'd like Jose to kind of, it's a big block of text, and I think the only person either can properly explain this would be Jose Gonzalez, the Chief Administrative Officer for us. Can you do that real quick? And I'll get to you, Mr. Morella, in a second, okay? Can you explain what it is?
Okay. This is a contract that is roughly five years old. This was the firm, the local firm of digital engineering. They've been managing and coordinating all activities that have taken place over the last five years along I-10 and Loyola. It all started maybe five years ago with ground-level improvements, okay? It was a federal aid project, and it continued on with the ongoing work that continues to happen on I-10 and Loyola with the two elevated ramps, the DDI. And all the work is expected to be completed in May, and we're running out of money with the cap, and we need digital to continue to manage and coordinate all activities because we still need a number of cooperative endeavor agreements with the DOTD to transfer properties and to accept maintenance, you know, between the airport, the city, and the state DOTD. So we're asking for a cap increase of $20,000, and with the $20,000, I think we can go ahead and complete the project. Payments are being made on an hourly basis. It's not a lump-sum contract.
Thank you so much. Anybody else in the council? All right, Mr. Morella, how you doing today?
I'm doing fine. How about yourself?
Let's roll. We got three minutes.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 52 years. One thing I wanted to ask you on that, Jose. It's not behind schedule, is it?
No, it's not. Now, you gotta remember this. It's a state contract, okay?
Right, I got you.
It's a DOTD contract.
That's why I'm asking if it's behind schedule. I know they were.
It's being managed by the DOTD. They have a program manager, and on top of that, we also have a consulting firm that is acting on our behalf to make sure that everything is being done properly. No, to answer your question, it's not behind schedule, and I think the entire project is expected to be completed by May.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Morella. Anybody else? Okay. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,437, and ordinance approved in a professional services agreement with Principal Engineering Incorporated regarding 25th and Salem Sewer Lift Station, Kenner Public Works Number PW-2023-3-SW, and an amount not to exceed $193,559.88 for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Ronnie Schworth, second by Councilmember Lahat. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Yeah.
Councilwoman D. Dunn.
Yeah, I just want to ask one question about this, because when I read the contract, it said that it was funded by the Department of Environmental Quality. So that's, that we are not putting any money into this? Did I read that right? Are we putting any money into it?
It's an LDQ loan, so it's us putting the money. They're just loaning. It's a loan program. So this is a new loan, and before you can close on the loan, you have to have basically a design engineer picked out. So this is the first step for that new LDQ loan. So the city will fund it through the loan, and then we'll have to just repay the loan.
Okay.
Council lady, the only thing I can add to that, that LDQ loans is one of perhaps a limited number of methods for financing sewer capital improvements, okay? The loans are 20-year loans at .95% interest rates. The city does have to apply for those loans. We did apply for this particular loan, as well as the one on the next item, and we managed to get that loan at .95.
Okay, so, I mean, that's a good rate. .9, and that bothered, I'm saying, is this real? .9 something percent? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Wilmot.
Ms. Joanne, if you could, just explain this project.
This project, the 25th and Salem and the 25th and Helena, the next one, these lift stations are located on the canal bank between two streets. They're older, they're probably 40 years old. They've been here, I've been here for 32 years, they've been here. It's, the canal banks are getting shorter and closer to the buildings, they're inside the buildings. It's hard to maintenance these stations, so we're going to relocate the stations to the end of the street. It's gonna be submersible stations with just a panel sticking up so that we can have better access to be able to maintain the stations, vacuum the stations, and it'll be much better fix for the city.
And it's more than just relocating. Is it not some new equipment?
All new equipment.
All new equipment, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Anyone else? Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,438, and ordinance approved in a professional services agreement with Stewart Consulting Group Incorporated regarding 25th and Helena Street, Helena Sewer Lift Station, Kenner Public Works Number PW-2023-4-SW, and an amount not to exceed $195,752 for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember George Brannigan, second by Councilmember Tom Wilmot. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,439, and ordinance approved in a cooperative endeavor agreement with KidCam LLC for the use of Musburgerlino Gym in exchange for summer recreational programming for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councilman Wilmot.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I know that kid camps and so forth, they're very good, of course, for our citizens and their children, but at the same time, this is in a form of a CEA, corporate endeavor agreement. I notice that we are doing these more and more, and sometimes, again, they are very good, but they need to be looked at closely. Every time they involve a third party, and those third parties are coming into Kenner, and they have their own programs, if you will, and of course, it's for our citizens as well as other citizens that might be children that are brought into the city. Sometimes they're good, but they need to be to the benefit of the city. Each needs to be looked at closely. The council approves all of these. They're required for us to approve them. So we look at them on a case-by-case basis as they come across. The district councilman's opinion matters, because each councilman has various parks in their area, and these CEAs, they're gonna understand them thoroughly, and they need to be looked at by the entire body, this entire body. We also need to look at the status of the applicant, whether they're in good standing with the Secretary of State, if they have good history and their experience in what they're doing. The civic association's involvement needs to be looked at to see if they expressed an interest in this corporate endeavor agreement, and if they haven't, then so be it. The city is getting a fair rental fee. The duration and term of the CEA is important, and then also that the activities fit into the city's recreation plans. So each and every one of these has different spins on them. So I just point that out, because this is like the fifth one, or fourth or fifth one we've had in the last three, four months. So I think it's important, of course, and we do this, apparently, we have parks that are sitting without much involvement with any children. So that's all I have to say on this at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Brannigan.
I'm in agreement with this particular one. I think that this kid camp can help drive players into our baseball, softball, and T-ball leagues during the summer. So I'm hoping that the participation in the baseball and summer sports goes up because of having children using the facility on these camps during the day.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilwoman, Councilwoman McKenney.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a, I want to ask the question. Is KidCam a local business? Or where are they located, in the city of Kenner or Jefferson Parish?
It's a local business, yes, owned by a Kenner resident.
Okay. And then also, and then also, I know that they used to hold a camp at a different location. Is this a relocation of their regular camp, and is it gonna, is it open to only Kenner residents, or is it?
Not open.
Okay. To open, for people from outside, right?
So Kenner residents have a application window where they have a priority registration. To correct the mayor, they're locally, this portion of the KidCam franchise is locally based. Their office is off of Causeway. The people who are involved are Kenner residents with this camp. This is actually a move, I'm sure a lot of people in the community have heard, with like, Country Club is closing. This KidCam was held previously at that location. They actually came to us, I guess, knowing that they would not be able to serve people in Kenner at that location anymore, and the majority of family served are from Kenner. And that's our hope for this as well. I'm sorry, did I answer all of your questions?
Yeah, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that Kenner residents are obviously given a preference.
There are, you'll see in the agreement, there are discounts that are specific to Kenner residents, and they do hold priority registration through January 15.
People are thinking about summer already in January?
I don't know. When my kids were little, you started shopping summer camp right after Christmas. If you wanted to go, where you wanted to go.
That's why my kids go to grandparents' house. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero.
Is that a? It was a, okay, I'm sorry.
Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,440, and ordinance authorized the purchase of a Faro Focus Premium 3D Laser Scanner System for Faro Technologies Incorporated, a sole-source provider in the amount of $63,515.67 for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Brennan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Chief's not here.
Make him speak.
He sent someone to answer all these questions.
Make him speak.
Yeah, council, yeah, I think the whole council wants an explanation of what it is. Packs. Okay. Anybody else?
I'll let you know. So just to let you know, I'm David DeFord, Deputy Chief for the Kenner Police Department. So what this piece of equipment is, and what it does, it takes a 3D image of the interior of any building, or the exterior of any building, or anything out in the open. Say we have a storm-related incident, and there's some garbage trash piles, we can go out and take 3D image of that. We can do it for traffic crashes, crime scenes. It's almost unlimited on what it can do, and it gives you a true 3D image printout, and it can be sent out.
Thank you, Deputy Chief DeFord. That's great.
It's quick. Any questions?
We have one from Councilwoman Wilmot. And then I'll get to her.
I'm just curious, as far as this is concerned, if you have a bad traffic accident, a fatality, for example, could it be used in that situation?
Absolutely, yes.
Interesting, okay.
We're gonna offer it, also, if the city needs to use it. So the contract comes with a three-year agreement, warranty, plus the training, plus all of the equipment, and if the city needs to use it for any reasons, then we're gonna offer that also. We'll send our people out to take the 3D imaging for you.
Go ahead, and Tom still has the floor. Can I give him a second?
Thank you, thank you. So if we have destruction such as we had with Idaho with various buildings and so forth, it would be user-friendly and?
Absolutely. We could come out and make the documentation for FEMA.
Interesting. Very, very good. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman D. Dunn first, please.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Okay, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, this is a one-time buy?
Yes, it is.
Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Council Chair. I just want to commend the chief in the department for continuing the, comes to the council, and invest in technology that obviously is only going to help the city be safer and help on many of the police departments be safer, and I think between the flock cameras and just everything else, that is a trend fire, and it just adds to the strength of the department and the safety of the city, so I commend the police department, thank you.
Councilman Ronnie Schworth.
Hey, Chief, I want you to think about twenty-five years ago when we worked together. You think we'd be sitting right here together?
I knew I would, I wouldn't have thought about you.
No, I would, no, that's for sure. But anyway, we're going to be using this equipment, be able to, fire department be able to use it?
Absolutely.
Jason, Gee, there you go, we've got another piece of equipment for you.
There's a fee that comes with it, though.
Anybody else? All right, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance amending chapter thirteen of the Code of Ordinances to add Article eight to be titled Parks and Playgrounds and establish timeframes for parks and playgrounds to be closed to the public of the city of Kenner. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving an agreement with Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated to provide air conditioning, heating, and refrigeration services, labor only, in accordance with RFP twenty-three dash sixty-seven eighty-six, in an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policy Services. Award number fifteen JCOPS dash twenty-three dash GG dash zero four nine three eight dash UHPX, in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars, with the city of Kenner match of one million seven hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty dollars for the hiring of new police officers for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Ames Group Incorporated regarding the resurfacing of Veterans Boulevard, Williams Boulevard to Roosevelt Boulevard, state project number H period zero one five five six two, federal aid project number H zero one five five six two, in an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, state project number H period zero one five seven nine six, federal aid project number H zero one five seven nine six, regarding Veterans Boulevard, shared use path from Richland Street to Williams Boulevard. Item sixteen F is an ordinance approving a professional service agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC regarding the resurfacing of Vintage Drive eastbound, Duncan Canal to Power Boulevard, state project number H period zero one five five one five six one, federal aid project number H zero one five five six one, in an amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving amendment number four to the engineering agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated dated March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, regarding Louisiana Department of Environment Equality, LDEQ, Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF Loan Administration slash Management, to increase the not-to-exceed amount by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving an agreement with Waste Pro of Louisiana Incorporated for the collection and transportation of garbage or trash within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana, for a period of ten years, and providing for related matters. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Yes, before the council says anything, Mayor Glazer wishes to say something else, I'm going to give him the floor.
Yes, on sixteen H, it will not be voted on at the next meeting, it's a one-meeting layover, so it'll be the first meeting in February. Just letting the public know that the Waste Pro contract will be not next meeting with the one after, the first one in February. Just so there's no confusion.
Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Council President. I just wish to really applaud Councilman Brian Brennan, the last six months having been council president. I don't know that the public realizes all the duties that fall upon the council president, but it's a fair amount, and Council Brennan did an outstanding job, and also our council clerk and her assistant, as well as the administration and this council body, it all came together, it ran very smoothly, so really, thank you for all your hard work.
I appreciate that. Give me a car wash, look.
There you go, I would appreciate that. So, and also, and welcome aboard Councilman Joey Lahat, and I look forward to working with you for the next six months as well, and I'm sure you're going to do a great job. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so response on that, I've enjoyed the work and relationship with this council, we're all, we all talk to each other all the time, if you want to know how we operate, we've become friends, sometimes we go out to eat together, we want to talk about council stuff there, but we all have become friends, especially the administration's been very open about everything we've done these almost last two years, it's been great, I've had a good time doing it, but it is a lot of work, and it is something we try to do to help the city. In terms of my district, we met with the Treasure Chest this week, we're on path to an opening sometime in the spring, subject to weather delays and things, but maybe hopefully May and June, it's going to be a great facility, they sent me some artistic renditions today of the inside with the steak restaurant, a deli, it's going to be awesome, it's going to be a great place for Kenner residents to go, a brand-new place, which we need in my district, which is, I think is going to just cause a chain reaction in Lake Town. So I do, very excited about Boyd Gammon's endeavor in bringing that to the city of Kenner, so we're on track for that, and I look forward to coming to D Dunn's celebration, Martin Luther King. I went last year, and it was long, but I really had a good time. It was a great, we had a lot of people performing out there, and I really did like meeting everybody in your district, so I'll be there, I'll be there on Monday.
Thank you.
Councilman Ronnie Schworth.
Thank you, sir. We talked about this before, and it's came, finally coming to light, that Butch Stewie Gym will be opening up next Monday for indoor soccer, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Nanofe, can you help me out with this?
Yes, so, starting January twenty-second, NOLA Sports Center will start as part of their cooperative endeavor agreement, the organized free play, what we're considering the after-school program. Let me see, sorry, I should have had this information in front of me, but I wasn't expecting this. So we're going to have the ribbon cutting at five o'clock, free play will start at five-thirty, we encourage the public to come out and join us as we open this new facility, and we're going to have some more information on the programming, both what NOLA Sports offers to the community as a business, and their partnership with Kenner Recreation for leagues and other activities. Right now, the free play would be during those times, five-thirty to seven, every Monday, Wednesday. We're looking to gear towards younger ages on Mondays, and to hopefully institute a teenage program on Wednesdays.
Also, remember, it's cold outside, inside the gym will be nice and warm. So come on, please, come out there, bring your kids, let's have fun. These people are very good soccer instructors, if you're looking for your child to improve in their soccer skills, please come in out there, these instructors will help them tremendously. Thank you.
Councilmember D Dunn.
Okay, thank you, I don't even like talking this much, but thank you so much for mentioning, again, the MLK parade and ceremony. I've been getting a lot of calls stating that, you know, what about the inclement weather? But we do have a Plan B with this Pilgrim Baptist Church, the mayor have already said that. We do have other people that have lined up, Barnable Band will be out there, also Discovery, they have agreed to come and participate in the march, but I will promise the mayor, the police chief, the council, and the administration, we will not be out there for three hours this year, I promise you that.
Four.
I forgot about the march. That's it, thank you.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, and a motion to reconsider or remove from the tabled position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
I have Wesley Goodman.
He's gone.
He left.
Yeah, he's gone. That leaves me.
That leaves Al Morella next.
Al Morella, forty-two, sixty, Eastwood, Old Drive, Fifth District, fifty-two years. I want to elaborate on sixteen H by responding to the article that was in the Advocate yesterday. Waste Pro, according to the article, is going, we're going to be paying eighteen dollars a household for solid waste pickup, as opposed to thirteen thirty-eight that we're paying right now, which reflects a thirty-five percent increase. So now, I'm extending, and I'd like the council president to do the same thing, I'm extending an open invitation to a representative from Waste Pro to be at the next council meeting and explain this. Okay? Now, there was a mention that the administration was talking about maybe coming up with a subsidy to ease the pain of the residents of Kenner. Okay? So I would like to know, we got a hundred and eighteen million dollar budget, we got to dip into the general fund to fund the budget, we paid off lawsuits, we got more hanging over our head back here, and we just, less than ten percent of the voters went to the polls on November eighteenth and approved a hundred and fifty percent property tax increase for the fire department. So I'd like to know, and this leaves the fire department still with a shortfall, anyway, I'd like to know where this subsidy would come from. Okay? Now, that's all I have on that issue. I just wanted to let the public know, give you some specifics on this Waste Pro proposed contract. Now, I want to talk about the Kenner Housing Authority. We, and for years, I've been saying that we need, we used to have, a representative at those meetings, we don't have, no, no one has been there now in quite some time. We have an issue right now before that Kenner Housing Authority that could negatively impact over two hundred residents in affordable housing. Okay? Now, so we need someone from this government to start attending those meetings and find out what's going on down there. We're talking over two hundred people might be home, with the issue that rests with the parish, which I'm going to deal with them Wednesday. Now, I want to direct this to the second-in-command here with the Kenner Police Department. Now, I made an arrangement with then-Chief Carrollway thirteen years ago, when I got appointed to that board, that we would have a detective at that table with the Kenner Housing Authority at every meeting. Well, now, it's been carried on, there were a few times we didn't, but now, for the last two consecutive months, we haven't had anybody from the KPD at that table.
Mr. Morella, your time has expired three minutes, I do appreciate that.
That's okay, he can answer the question when I'm done. I'm done now, Joey, that's all I had.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, we're going to attempt to do that.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Morella, I would anticipate at the meeting that we vote for Waste Pro, there's going to be extensive explanation, extensive questions, and, yeah, I think somebody from Waste Pro should be here, so there's going to be a lot of talk, and, look, it's, garbage is a big issue, and I agree with you, it's a big money thing, so I'd anticipate a lot of discussion at that meeting from us, the public, the administration, so I think you'll understand everything at that point.
I'm glad to hear that, Councilmember Lahat, that you're on the same page with me. I'm glad to hear that. Okay.
All right, next.
The acting chief can give his comments when I leave, I'm listening.
He's here for Chief Conley, we've had an issue, so I'm not going to.
Can I relay the message to Chief Conley?
It's not appropriate, because I don't think it's.
I want to see that detective at that table, man, for the next meeting.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Richard Brown. How you doing, Richard?
Doing fine.
All right, you got three minutes, let's go.
Congratulations, Mr. President, and thank you. Mr. Morella brought up the last item on the agenda, which is the proposed ordinance to approve a contract with Waste Pro. I'm simply going to say, I've looked at the contract, I've studied it, I've reviewed it, I have followed this garbage situation very closely since, I believe, December of twenty nineteen, when Ben Zahn started talking about switching our service. I know these issues well, I support what the city has proposed, I support this contract. And as far as the price goes, going up to eighteen dollars, there's only two years left on the ten-year contract, so it makes sense the price would go up, but this is for a ten-year contract, with the new price of eighteen dollars, we will still be the, have the cheapest rate anywhere in the entire New Orleans metropolitan area, the entire area. We will be cheaper than everybody else, even with the increase. And by the way, some cities who pay more only get once-a-week pickup, we're going to continue with twice-a-week pickup. But the main reason I wanted to speak was because of what appears to have been a mix-up regarding the Christmas tree recycling. The contract with IV Waste provides very clearly, as we've done in the past, there will be one weekend January for the Christmas tree recycling, IV Waste is to handle it, not Romelli. And the contract says very clearly, the city gets to select the week, and I understand from two people with the administration I've talked to, that the city selected the week of January fourth through January eleventh, eleventh or tenth, tenth yesterday. However, IV, people started complaining on Facebook their Christmas trees weren't getting picked up. Some people called IV Waste and were first told, oh, we're not doing that, then when they kept calling, they were told, oh, well, that program starts on the eleventh. Well, excuse me, it was supposed to end on the tenth. But I do understand IV Waste was picking up some Christmas trees. Can it, not so much for my sake, but for the sake of the public, is there somebody from the administration or the city attorney's office who can explain what happened there, and whether the Christmas trees are really being recycled, or are they going into the garbage?
I believe that might be a question for the contractor themselves. We've had countless conversations via email with regard to their directives and acting in accordance with the contract for IV. They have approximately one week within which to do it, we selected that week, it was January third through the tenth. We wanted to do it in that time period, so it's in conjunction with JP's moving everything starting today down to Laffitte. So that information was communicated to IV, it was confirmed, so we certainly can contact IV to find out the status of the trees.
Thank you.
And they don't take flocked trees in that program, correct?
No, they must be completely clean, that is one thing, if your tree was left curbside, and it's got even just some little tinsel, that tinsel has to be removed, they have to have a very clean tree for the uses down along the coast.
Must lead to some confusion, so, okay, thank you for that. Before we adjourn, I know Mayor Terrence, I'm sorry, Mayor. It's been a long day, Fire Chief, you want to come up, like you said? Not anymore? Okay, sorry. All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're done, huh? At this point, I'm going to attain a motion to adjourn. Done.